I am going to go ahead and call the meeting to order here right at 7:00 PM on the nose, noting that we have myself, Kirk Scott, Norm Peck, Rich Gordon, and Rosemary Osfeld in attendance. So I'd like to just dive into the agenda if possible. We have a lot to talk about tonight. And the first order of business on the agenda is additions to the agenda. Um, I'd like to propose an addition under new business, which is the P O C D timeline. I believe I can make that motion. Can anyone, would anybody be willing to second that addition to the agenda?
Second.
Okay, Kirk, second. All in, any discussion? All right, all in favor of adding a P O C D timeline to the agenda? I.
Right.
Yours unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so the second order of business here is public delegations. As we have no members of the public on the call and no correspondence that I'm aware of, I'm gonna go ahead and say we're okay with that. And on to new business. So um, our new business, we, um, I received communication from Gary Gaishel late Friday, and we've been discussing through the weekend and today. He received some communication from Connecticut's O P M, Office of Policy Management, which keeps track of, you know, all the towns' plans of conservation and development, and that's who we file our P O C D with. The governor's order that had been interpreted by Gary as providing us a 90-day extension actually did not provide us with a 90-day extension. That extension was good only for P O C Ds which were due from the start of the governor's orders in March through September 2020. Our P O C D is due on December 10th, 2020, and does not make it eligible for an extension. Therefore, our P O C D is still due on December 10th, 2020. If we do not make that deadline, then we are at risk of being denied discretionary funding from the state of Connecticut. That can include a number of things like brownfield grants, steep money, educational funding, a number of things that we would try to apply for and get from the state of Connecticut. Our recourse, our option, should we not make the deadline, would be that each time a department or, you know, town group applied for discretionary funding from the state of Connecticut, they would also have to submit a waiver, a waiver request of this P O C D requirement. So, in summary, not good news. Um, I certainly do not want to do anything, especially during this time where I assume that there will be additional discretionary funding opportunities related to COVID. I certainly do not want to be a part of anything that puts the town at risk of not receiving discretionary funding. Not to mention that even if we were to apply for these waivers each time, even if they were to be granted, that's a lot of, you know, extra work and rigmarole for the other town departments applying for this money. Yeah. So, um, there are some options that we can discuss. I'd love to get your feedback on this really unfortunate update. My initial thought is that we need to meet the deadline. And to meet the deadline, the Board of Selectmen needs to have our final draft, our proposed draft, by the end of August. We had built in additional time for the Planning Commission to review the draft in, from April to June. We had built in time for town staff to review the draft in July. It seems to me that those things are going to have to happen concurrently, and that we are going to really need to buckle down and complete this document in the next three weeks or so. So, um, that all said, I'd like to open it up for your thoughts and questions.
Last, the last plan that we did, we, we submitted a plan, but we left out, and ask Gary about this. We left out a couple of sections, and we did it like, it took about a year more to do that. I don't know whether we put the town in jeopardy or not, but that's what happened.
That could, that is an option, and that will work. And that's why we're still operating under the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development, because it was actually filed again in 2010, which reset us for one year, which is why we got until 2020. So, um, that's an option. We can turn in something that's partially complete.
That sounds like a really good, like, quote-unquote, worst-case scenario. I think that that actually is really reassuring to know that that was done in the past, and that that is like, you know, the absolute worst thing that could happen is do that, which has been done before and worked for all intensive purposes. I think that that actually is really, really reassuring.
I just have one more thing to add. Oh, I, I would love to put, I would love to finish this thing, too. The only other thing is, my comments are somewhat in line with Rosemary's. And, um, you know, we could submit, the requirement is to submit a revision, right? What, what, what is the requirement, like, how much of a revision? Is there anything that spells out how far or what has to be done?
We've been told that it can really be as small as a word, honestly. It's just that it needs to be, you know, looked at and adopted. I think that
Right.
in the spirit of my, what I want to make sure that we address together and are comfortable with as a group, is that we've been very transparent about this process with the public. We've had a lot of really great stakeholder engagement. And I think
Right.
that we built in time in our timeline to continue that engagement. And that's the kind of, that's the piece that's going to be cut short under this new reality. So I just want to make sure that we're very transparent and open and truthful about this, this current situation
Well, what do you?
and where we are now, you know, because I think if we just kind of try to shove something through, no explanations, it's not really in good faith of, of what our stakeholders partnered with on us to get us this far. But I do think that we have the information to complete it.
I think, look, to your point about doing some things concurrently, I think that that, maybe there will be a public hearing, like, maybe the same week of the first selectman thing. You know, so I think that, um, you made a really good point about that. And if we collaborate with Jen and Gary and just make sure that they do build into that, that public period where we can get public input, and then just put it as close as possible to the first selectman or Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, well, there are, there are public hearing dates built into that schedule
Okay, good.
as required by state statute.
Right.
So there are opportunities to speak. It's just kind of like the one-off discussions that have been happening as part of our writing and editing process.
Okay, got it.
And I know Rich has had some of those already. He's been really good about, about that. Kind of just checking in with the stakeholders, did I interpret this correctly? Is this what you meant? Things like that, that kind of will happen over rounds of edit. Now, all the, all, as anyone who's ever edited a group document before knows that now we're in a situation where, instead of having multiple versions, we have one version with multiple edits kind of coming in concurrently. And that, that's fine. It's just a different way to do it. But that's the situation we're in.
Well, to your point about the schedule, right, and, and what's in the schedule and having to do some things concurrently. If you feel like we have to change the schedule, I certainly think, you know, like you said, to, um, give our stakeholders their, their due, we would have to definitely make some kind of notice that we're changing the schedule. If, if we do decide to go that route.
I don't think we can. If we choose to change the schedule, it will mean choosing to go later, which I'm not comfortable with, but I'm willing to hear from you guys.
Well, if, if we think we can still meet the schedule, I know my, I, my time has opened up quite a lot. So I have some things that I had to take care of that I finished. So I should be able to develop, devote a lot more time to it now. So I, from my point of view, I think, I think keeping the schedule is probably a good idea.
Okay.
And that's just my two cents, but.
So we're gonna need the sections in. I mean, we've got to get a final document to the Board of Selectmen in August.
Mm-hmm.
The sections, we're all different writers, you know, we all have different formats. We're getting feedback from all different stakeholder groups. So the sections are coming in really inconsistently with one another, which is totally fine. We expected that, right? So in addition to just completing the sections, we'll then need some time between that and the August deadline to just kind of clean up the document, format it consistently, you know, wordsmith, proofread, all that. So backing out from that, we, like, everybody's got to have their section in within the next two or three weeks.
I could do, I think I can do the clean energy one in probably two weeks. And the open space, the open space one's massive. I think that if I, I think realistically, I could probably finish both of those by the end of July. The natural resources one, I think I would probably need, well, Gary was supposed to write that one with me. I had brought up the point, do we need an additional natural resources section? If there's a lot of stuff that's already covered in the other sections, could that just be like a, a heading, or, you know, like an intro to some of the other sections? That is how I think realistically, we could complete that.
Okay, I think open space is super important.
That one's really important. I think that's gonna take a lot of time.
I think clean energy could be added later.
Clean energy could be quite brief, I think, like, four pages.
Is there a situation, though, where you could prioritize open space over clean energy so that we make sure that's in the document?
Yeah, I think so. And I think what I'll have to do in order to finish that, though, is just reach out to the Conservation Committee.
Okay.
And have them help me with that.
I think Art.
I think they would want to anyhow. Yeah. Because I feel like open space by itself could take a long time.
I think he maybe has done it, Art.
I'll talk to Art. I saw him at the post office the other day. Um, but realistically, I probably won't be able to start until next week. But that doesn't really matter. I mean, I'm just saying.
It matters when you think you'll be able to finish, because we're in a situation now that like, if, if someone can't finish on deadline, fine. Like, let's just be open about it and hand it off to somebody else who can, because the, the, I think, it's just now a sprint. So whoever can take the baton, right?
Well, I have, I have another point to make, though. It's not like we're starting from nothing with these things, too. So, I mean, if there's a section that doesn't get as much attention as it, as you would like, we could, uh, you know, revisit that and, and take the, take, take the section, you know, with, with minor edit.
Yep. For sure.
So, I mean, it's, it's not like we're starting with nothing.
Right. We could use the existing open space plan. I just know that Art has already updated it.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So when you say the August deadline, what date specifically do we need to hand that off to the next group of people? Should there be like, maybe, I don't know, July, whatever, like, we pick a date at the end of the, end of July, and then there's a week in, in August, and then we hand it off, like, just real quick, and then I gotta run?
I'm pulling up my calendar, because adding to the, the Board of Selectmen only has one meeting in August. And that meeting is
Well, what do you think about releasing those as, as they're done? I mean, there are some sections that are done now.
Yes, and I've been combining that. Yes, we've been doing that. And we have some to review today that Rich went through. Norm and I finalized residential development. Agricultural is pretty well done. So we're, I, we're
I sound pretty good.
They're passing that through, I think, at this point.
Would we ask the Board of Selectmen to call a special meeting in the month of August at a different time to help us with this? I think that that would be reasonable, because, you know, there was a glitch here, and I think that it would be in their interest to accommodate by maybe giving us an extra week or something. Just so we could have one, you know, maybe one set eyes, make it have that same tone throughout. So say we all finish all the sections by the end of July, and then give like, one week to make it cohesive. And then, I'm not sure when that Board of Selectmen thing is, but
Well, listen, the Planning Commission is August 4th.
Okay.
And I think that this document, as an extension of the Planning Commission, needs to be reviewed by them before going to the Board of Selectmen.
Got it.
So if we, if all of the sections are completed by July 24th, we have one week to combine them into one document.
When is that Board of Selectmen meeting? You were about to say that, or maybe you did say it.
Yeah, um, they just have the one that month on August 5th.
I can talk to Mark Salerno and bring up that topic or that question about asking them to have a special meeting just to review this. I feel like they would need, they would probably want to have a meeting about it anyway.
Yeah. Well, right, and it's, it sets off, our deadline to them sets off a 65-day review period. So it's less about the Board of Selectmen meeting and more about making that review period deadline, because then it, they have to schedule a public hearing within that time. It has to go on the town website during September. This is, these are all dates that have been backed into from December 10th, working backwards. And certainly, we could call an additional planning meeting separately from August 4th if we feel like the document is not ready for that. But, I mean, we're talking days here. Can we plan to try to finish the sections by July 24th? And then look at these special meetings if we don't make that deadline?
I think that that is reasonable, yeah. But I just know, yeah, sometimes it just takes time to, maybe that should be built in as like a an option eventually.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's not ideal, but
Start thinking about other potential ways to make the, a special meeting could be another avenue to give ourselves another week, say, or something. Say, on the 4th, the Planning Committee approves the sections in their, like, kind of state where maybe it's not totally cohesive yet, and then, I don't know. I'm just thinking of like, other worst-case scenarios, but yes.
Well, because that one, I think, you know, we're, I, what I would like to do is, like, start with trying to get done what we want to get done, and then lean on the other options of removal of sections, keeping of old sections, and delaying meetings. I mean, those are the tools that are disposable. We might need all of them. So let's try to start in a situation that leaves them all available to us.
Yeah.
All right. Um,
I think I had to head out.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Bye, Rosemary.
Bye.
Bye.
Happy birthday. Yeah, it's Wednesday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Soon on Wednesday.
Hey, we could all sing.
Happy birthday.
Bye, guys. Thank you. Bye.
Wait, we're gonna sing.
Oh, we're gonna sing, okay. All right.
Just kidding.
Okay.
It's being recorded for future uses. We're not
That's okay.
Bye, guys. Thank you. Talk soon.
Bye.
All right. Now that I was Debbie Downer, want to move through the sections? Um, I'm just gonna hop into old business and go through the section reports so that we can get a handle on where we are on everything and determine next steps. We actually made quite a bit of progress between the last meeting and this meeting, so, and that was only 10 days. So that's a good sign. Um, the first one, agricultural resources, Rosemary's just about finished with that one. We had already reviewed all the recommendations at a previous meeting. Norm, I did talk to Rosemary earlier this week after you and I spoke with regards to the recommendation for, um, additions to allowable uses on farms. So she was gonna add that in and connect with Mark Christensen about what the specific list was there. That's being handled. Coastal resources, I have not started writing, but I do have a handle on the recommendations. And I can have coastal resources ready for our next meeting, which is on July 17th. Which we can, it's not on July 17th, it's on July 15th. Um, so we can review that there. Historic resources, Rich, we, we reviewed that earlier. I saw that you sent it to the stakeholders there, and they were happy with it.
Yeah, Barb, Barb Johnson-Lowes, the head of the Historic Commission, was happy with it. Was happy with it, and the people on the committee were happy with it, so.
Okay, great. Um, a question on that for the group, related to historic resources, but actually just related to all of these. Because of the way the information came in from all the stakeholders, we kind of have some, like, different issues with, like, perspective and tone and format. As long as the recommendations stay the same, are you all comfortable with any edits to the formatting or wordsmithing of the background information that appears before the recommendations?
I'm fine with that.
Comfortable, okay. All right, Rosemary just spoke about natural resources and open space. Residential development, I am very thankful, Norm, for your time this week. And if anyone would like to go through the changes we made to that, they're very quick, but I can run them by you. Let me just pull up, a screen share. Um, and I can show you what is new. It's really just a refinement of what was already existing. So let me do that. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Great. So we had talked about kind of a key fact section in each, which I think is much easier to do after it's written. So that was, it was easy to do that here, because we had already kind of done the meat of the section. So the key facts are new in that they are called out, but they are not new in that these facts already appeared elsewhere in this document. So I'm just gonna go ahead and scroll past those, because that's a formatting change, but not a content change. Then we have the existing population data that we already all had reviewed, projection population data, the previously reviewed information about our current available housing stock, including things that have been approved but not yet constructed. And then affordable housing. I have this question here that I've got to get clarification from Gary. There's some way to earn a one-year, one-year moratorium on appeals without hitting the 10%, but I don't exactly know what that is. So, Norm, unless you know about that, I was just gonna inquire with Gary and Bill.
Um, it's, I think it's been discussed at the zoning board. We were always afraid of it because of the fear of a lawsuit against the town trying to just squash development. I think it was the feeling that it's, it's a touchy subject and risky, unless you have a very good reason. That's what I recall. That we shied away from it. Whenever it comes up, we shy away from it.
I thought that might be the case. So we could potentially even just remove this line, because it doesn't really add much to the plan anyway. Um, this is the current inventory of affordable housing. And I think that there are some missing that are approved but have not yet been constructed. So I just want to double-check with that. Um, this paragraph was in there before, but just takes us from the transition of the current status to the recommendations, where we discussed that there are some barriers to considering further residential development, such as, um, population is declined, is projected to decline. Are, the most recent S I T A housing study showed that we have adequate housing currently. The housing stock is adequate for the project, current and projected population. The Community Questionnaire and Public Forum was pretty clear on slowing down growth. And, um, we are facing some issues with sewer capacity. So this doesn't say, this doesn't, this paragraph doesn't recommend one way or the other, but just kind of states the current things that would impact and potentially slow residential development.
That, that research was done prior to this COVID thing.
Yes.
And perhaps you might insert some caveat in this statement that we're currently feeling a pressure from the West to to move here.
Yeah.
So it's immeasurable, but it's something that has to be, I think we should mention it. Maybe, yeah.
All right, I can go back and wordsmith that. I totally agree with what you're saying. These recommendations are the base recommendations that we all went over as a group in our March meeting, but Norm had some really great ideas to help fine-tuning them. This is the same, evaluating the options for reducing future impact on water and soil resources, particularly in the northern end of town. At one point, this section suggested rezoning the north end of town as an agricultural zone. Upon further consideration and conversation, we elected to remove that, but instead, um recommended some things that will make farming easier and more desirable and hopefully more profitable thereby encouraging agricultural uses in the north end of town. Uh, the second one, again, was already here, but with some more uh detail and teeth added by Norm, thank you, which is to continue to promote cluster development and uh, you know, CDC development, CDD um development uh instead of a traditional subdivision. Uh, Norm and I went through the zoning, section 23 of the zoning regulations uh in great detail to look at where those might be able to be amended should we desire to um increase some open space requirements and/or uh right now, the regulations make it optional for parcels less than 10 acres and/or four lots to do a CDD, but um the planning commission has, and I'm not sure that we've recently utilized, but we have the ability to require it for subdivisions smaller than that. It's not required, but we can make them. Am I interpreting that right, Norm?
Uh, I think it would be better to leave the regulations alone, but encourage the planning commission to utilize the CDD regulations whenever reasonably possible.
Okay.
To, to, to require it, I don't think is, is a good thing in every case.
Okay.
Like the example I gave you with the, the farmer with a couple of daughters or something.
Yeah. Uh, what about the part though that we were talking about with amending the regulations? Because those with septic were not required to maintain as much open space as those with sewer. And we talked about if there was maybe some room to wiggle those around?
Consider a, a higher percentage of open space.
Right.
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, so that's here. I can take out using, utilizing subjects, but I can, or I can, yeah. Does that get at what we were discussing now? Norm encouraged the planning commission to utilize CDZ zoning regulations whenever appropriate for applications less than 10 acres and/or four lots.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, this was also uh previously uh in the recommendations, but it's beefed up quite a bit um due to its importance. Establishing an affordable housing subcommittee, the state actually will now require us to develop slash update and a, a full-on affordable housing plan by the year 2022. So this has to happen anyway, but uh also affordable housing does need to be addressed in the POCD, so this is kind of our way of doing that, saying that um we recommend the subcommittee be created to um update that plan and that for purposes of cross-reference, this POCD references and supports the existing affordable housing plan, which is on file at the town, but will be updated in 2022. Um, and then it just references a couple of recommendations that we had already talked about as a group, uh, you know, strengthen the affordable housing plan, identify air, you know, identify key areas for affordable housing that are can, you know, being proactive about it, which is stuff we've talked about, identifying where it makes the most sense um for affordable housing, where um and, and trying to incentivize development there. And then it does talk about um another thing that we've discussed a number of times about uh residential uses in commercial areas and our preference that residences in the commercial zone be constructed as mixed use due to the small amount of commercial space that we have. That leads into this was, which was already there, commercial zoning is less than 5%, so the recommendation is that we don't put new development in the commercial area that's housing only. So that would prohibit big box apartment buildings unless the first floor is a commercial use. I don't see that as um being prohibitive to development, I see that as utilizing our space effectively, but um I think we discussed this last time, but if anybody has any concerns. Okay. Um. And the rest of this was there already, not new. Any feedback or we feel like this is okay?
That looks good.
All right. I'm gonna stop share there and continue on because we got some other good stuff to look at tonight. Um, commercial and industrial development, Kirk, um, any news there? I'm happy to take that one if you, if that would be helpful for you.
Um, I haven't spent a lot of time on that at all, honestly. So I'd be willing to work with you on it, or if you wanted to take it outright, either way is fine.
You wanna connect on that this week and just kinda?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do.
All right, great. Um, economic development, anything there?
Gary was uh gonna talk with, geez, I can't remember the person's name. He was gonna work with somebody from the uh arts, something to get some information regarding economic impacts related to art.
Yep, and I think they're meeting this week. Um, so that was good. I had this, um, did you, I can scan this and get it to you. Did you ever see this document?
I have not seen that.
All right, I'm gonna get this to you.
If that's, if, I would be willing to bet that's online, it's a sector website.
Okay.
What's the title of that?
That's the economic overview for East Lima and Niantic as prepared by sector, January 3rd, 2020.
Oh.
Oh, well, that's pretty, uh, it's pretty spot on. I think, I, I think if we, if we heavily reference that, I mean, they developed it for us.
Yeah.
So we would be kinda silly not to use it. Um, I have not seen that, I would like to see that.
Okay, yeah, in fact, I can.
Do you know where that came from? Do, did you get that off, offline or did somebody?
No, it's burnt out, so I must've, I must've done that, but um I'm equally happy to drop this off at your doorstep, uh, dumb street after this meeting, so.
Michelle, could you email that to me too?
Yes, you know what, I'll do that, I'll scan it and email it to everyone.
I've never heard of it.
That's a good idea. Well, it's just from January, right?
It's just from January and honestly, it's, it's light on the recommendations, there's not a lot of recommendations. However, it's very heavy on the data, so um it can tell you.
Well, actually, that's pretty good though. I mean, the uh, the data part is the hard part, I mean, I'm sure we won't have a hard time coming up with some recommendations.
Yeah, I will scan and send this to everyone. And I'll get it in the drive if it's not already there. Okay, uh, so clean energy, Rosemary updated us on. Um, emergency services, how's that going? I know it, that's such a weird one this year.
Right, um, we, we probably do need to make some edits based on current events, for sure. Um, Gary and I had a meeting with uh Chief Inglestein and we discussed a whole bunch of stuff. I have notes, but I don't have them in front of me. Um. As far as a write-up, there was uh, Gary did write something up after that meeting, I have to locate it and uh review it.
Okay.
So there's uh, mhm.
I'm wondering if that is a section that we can put some historical background information in and then intentionally leave a placeholder to update in the future.
Sounds like a reasonable idea.
Um, because I mean, so much of it's gonna depend on this building, right?
Yeah, and from the sounds of it, it's like not even a done deal at this point, right?
Yeah, that's.
Like, like it might even go for referendum again, so.
Yeah.
So yes, I think that uh putting a placeholder just for that reason, that, between that and the COVID and the, you know, public unrest and a bunch of other things, yeah, I, I, I could see uh pushing off on that a little bit.
All right.
But I think that there probably, there are some parts of it that we could get done before too, so.
Do you think you could have something for us to review by the July 15th meeting?
Absolutely, yep.
Awesome, okay, and now I'm gonna go back to screen share because Rich has kicked all of our butts on writing uh since the last time we met. Um, and he has a number of sections for us to look at that I think you all probably reviewed before, prior to this meeting, but I'll screen share and then Rich, you can walk us through.
Okay.
This one is the community center. So Rich's sections are all subsections falling under the one kind of like community spaces uh parent section. So he went ahead and did education, the community center, parks and recreation, and the library.
Right.
So, community center is what I have up now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the library probably is better to discuss when Larry's at the meeting, he, his group wrote out most, really wrote up the entire thing for the most part.
Okay.
But uh, yeah, I mean, the community center, you know, I did a brief introduction, I talked to a few people, some of it I took from some of the library suggestions because it could be implemented in the community center. Um, you know, do you want me to go to, create to the recommendations or?
Yeah, um, and are that, is that what this is? Yes, okay, right here.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, first one, the study of open spaces within a community center, especially in the main entrance area, uh, should be made to determine if storage areas could be added to these spaces at a reasonable cost. I think it's similar to what was written before, a couple of people I've spoke to said there's still issues with storage space. Of course, um, it's kind of up in the air with a new uh police building. Um, there's been talk of moving this parks and rec maybe, or a couple other uh departments to the new police building, and some, some people there aren't too thrilled about that. Um, so I, you know, I don't know how you wanna address that in the uh discussion, but um, you know, obviously, there's a potential referendum that might change things uh in a month or so, so um, you know, I kinda discussed, I kinda wrote, wrote this up a couple of months ago, but obviously that could change based on what happens with the refer, you know, with a potential referendum. Um, you know, basically, basically the issue with Gary was the meeting space and that was one of the reasons, I guess, Mr. Nickerson wanted to uh, you know, have that new location so he was able to move some, some space, some uh departments over there. Uh, a couple of the recommendations about the sidewalks and bike, hike trails were kind of taken a little bit from the library section that Larry wrote up, kind of was pretty much um based on the entire community center. Um, and is anybody of any, I don't have anybody of any questions about any issue, I guess? I mean, I kind of, with these things, I kind of throw in every pot, potential suggestion and whether we wanna leave it in, if it, you know, it's, you know, kind of up to the group where you wanna leave everything in, I kind of, any, any reasonable suggestion, like received or whatever I talked to, I kind of threw in there.
Yeah, I thought that all the recommendations were really good. I thought some of them were a little bit micro and that we could possibly lump them together and be a little bit more top level, but still communicate the same intent, like higher toilets. You know, we can talk about making the building more accessible overall.
Right, I know they, they've improved accessibility, one of the people I spoke to, the handicapped individuals, but uh, there was an issue, I guess, with the uh toilets, somebody I spoke to, so. You know, we talked about the historic resources, the section, I mean, there's some, there's some discussion having a central location there for um historic documents that was discussed. I think it was also mentioned at one of our public meetings, so somebody put that up.
One thing that I saw, I saw that the youth center was referenced in here, the libraries referenced um the, the flexible meeting space, but it, did you talk to anybody from the senior center?
Um, I did call somebody, um, who's the head of, who's the head of senior center? Um, and I spoke for a few minutes. Who, who are the director of the senior center, I can look it up. We, I, I spoke to her on the phone and I asked if she had any suggestions, and it was just like in early March and obviously, she said, yeah, if I figure out something, I'll, I'll give you a call, you know, give you a call, and uh, I haven't heard back from her, obviously, a lot of things took precedence in March, so uh, I, I probably won't hear from her.
Do you maybe wanna just give her one last reach out be, so that we can, I just wanna make sure, I mean.
Yeah.
Space-wise, that's quite a big part of the footprint of the community center, so I just wanna make sure that we're addressing it.
Rich, I have an idea for you, sorry, sorry, I don't mean to, if you're looking to get ahold of somebody at the senior center, they do like lunches over there. I don't know what day of the week it is, but I bet you if you showed up for lunch, you'd have plenty of people that would be willing to share ideas with you.
Are those still happening?
I don't know if they're still happening though, are they?
Oh, they're, oh, you know what, never mind, forget it.
Um, but you could call also the Chair of the Commission on Aging.
Okay.
Just as a last, you know, attempt.
Yeah, I'll just see if she wants to respond, I don't know if she, I have her, I have her in my uh phone directory, so.
Okay. Did anybody else have uh thoughts or questions on this? Um, after you read through it? Okay. Great. Um, I think I can move on from here. Oh, this is the library, so we'll save that for the next meeting.
Yeah.
This was really extensive, so I don't know, Larry's not gonna like me when I say, cut it in half, we're making sure.
I didn't, I didn't cut it, I only cut anything from what they proposed, so.
All right, educational spaces.
Right.
Um, did everybody get a chance to read through this prior to tonight? Um, skipping down to the recommendations, I think that this section had a lot of history in it that maybe we can remove at this point, kind of going back, but it's good to have, but I think we could probably shorten it.
Um, yeah, I took a lot from, there was a, a couple of years ago, there was a discussion about merging the elementary schools, I took a lot, I took a lot of statistical information from the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see anything wrong with leaving that in there. If you don't, you tend to.
If you don't, you tend to duplicate efforts, you know, it's like. I don't think it hurts to leave it there.
We might be able to present it in a shorter way, though. I mean, we set out to not have a two hundred and fifty page document. We are on track to write a two hundred and fifty page document. We're doing really good at being. I have a lot of sympathy now.
Right, I mean, I talked about, you know, moving, you know, hiring more personnel and whatever. But obviously with the, with COVID and everything, the budget's changed since I started writing this.
Well, right, and I don't, we gotta decide.
A lot of the, a lot of these sections, I guess.
We talked about our scope being specifically for education, there were some concerns about the scope. And we wanted to include education because it's a major part of living in this town. However, is it the is it within the purview of the Plan of Conservation and Development to address educational class sizes? And I think that what we landed on was that we were gonna look at the land use of our educational system.
I think that's all we're supposed to do.
Yeah, so some of this can you know.
Okay, which, um, I know they discussed discussing the two thousand nine P O C D. Anyone a little overboard adding adding to that, but yeah, I can, you can take out whatever you want, I don't know.
All right, here we are in the recommendations. Sidewalks comes up a lot.
Yeah, that was a safety issue, I think, you know, where children are bused to and everything, I mean, students are bused to, um.
I totally agree, and that ties to affordable housing too, like how to sidewalk from schools to other places where you can live.
Yeah, Jeff Newton, Jeff Newton brought up the school bus issue. That he was, they was talking about that.
Oh, this one here?
He was gonna say, yeah, he is. Looked at that during conversation, if he wanted, he wanted that put in somewhere.
Well, that's definitely a land use piece for sure. Where to park them. That dirt lot over next to the middle school, I don't know if that's an ideal place or not, and they have a trailer.
That's also right on a pond. As an environmental commission, we should probably be aware of.
I think that, um, yeah, I think that there's like two or three good points that were just made right then.
Yeah, would the Wetlands Commission allow that if it was brought before then?
Probably not.
I do not think they would.
The town should abide by the same regulations that everybody else does.
Good thing Rosemary is not here. She'd be, uh, she'd be, uh, getting really, really anxious right now.
Yes, she would.
There are only two recommendations in the two thousand nine P O C D. It mostly talked about, you know, student space and and they're talking about, um, didn't want temporary facilities at that time, so. A lot of this gets, of course, with busing, I guess, it's still, uh, how they're gonna handle on the fall, how they're gonna handle busing students is of course is up in the air right now, so. And I heard something this week, they, you know, they expect right now that it hasn't go as normal, but I think they have they have to look at different, you know, pronastic, you know, how they, different ways they're gonna handle if COVID's still, uh, rampant. You know, how to get, how to transport students, how what's, how much space they're gonna have in buses, that sort of thing.
So I am comfortable with all of these recommendations in in that I'm comfortable with what they're recommending. But I I am not sure that I am comfortable with them existing in the P O C D. Like this one. Do we have? Is it within our purview to talk about where they place students? I I'm having a hard time understanding it, so it's not a criticism, it's really a question.
Yeah, I think it was kind of, that was the main thing they had in the two thousand nine was, you know, adequate space for the students. And, uh, they didn't want the students in temporary facilities, they wanted more more permanent facilities for students.
If it's, if it speaks to class sizes and requiring more classrooms being built, then it might be, you know, it 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 may be relevant. But if it's like how, if if it's talking about how they're gonna manage the students and, you know, apart from land use. I think, I think maybe if we can tie it to land use, then it should stay. If we can't, then we should think about it. That's just my thought.
Let's go through it with that lens, Rich. I think we're really close. I don't think there's a lot of changes to be.
Basically, it's just taking certain some of it out, I guess.
Or just being brief. I I think we're close. I can take a look at it, um, like from.
Yes, I don't know what the, I think Jeff Newton brought the swimming pool is kind of a aging facility, so.
Well, that's addressed in the Parks and Rec too, so, um, I wasn't clear when, and that's our next one, um.
Right, I mean, that's.
Ending a second pool in town.
Right, because the, uh, students and the, um, and the townspeople, townspeople using the, using the swimming pool at certain times, so. You know, some, somebody suggested that at one of the, uh, the public meetings that he wanted because of that. It's a good idea to put a swimming pool preferably in town. I think, um, that would encompass suggesting, it would encompass, I guess, there's no Y M C A facility in Waterford and Old Lime, so I guess it'll be available for other towns to use.
What did Dave Putnam say about that?
The swimming pool? He didn't really, uh, really discuss it specifically. He wasn't, wasn't one of, I think, one of the suggestions.
Let's pop, any other questions on education? All right, let's pop over to Parks and Rec. All right. Um, did everybody have a chance to look through this one? Um, I thought we could use some data here in this upfront about why we need more recreational facilities. I'm not arguing with the recommendation, I don't know, but, um, uh, we don't provide any data about how there, what we would need and why we would need it. But the only, um, outside information source we have in this uh, puts our conventional standards of recreation space right in the range where it's recommended to be. So I think if we want to make the case for more rec fields, uh, it would be helpful to build in data about why we need more rec fields and which kinds. I thought that this had some really good recommendations in it, but that they were all very subjective. Like I could tell that the recreation people wanted more recreation.
Yeah, most of it was taken from Dave Putnam's suggestions, I think. Um, there are a couple I took from the public meetings, whatever. So with the, with the, with the data, do you know what kind of, which source I would use? I just have, I just have that information from Dave about the acreage and everything.
Well, I mean, there might be something in the regional plan of conservation and development. I didn't research any Parks and Rec type stuff in that, but that's in the drive. You know, even this, like, even with the addition of the synthetic turf field, the town could use an additional turf field. Okay, why? Like how, and I'm not arguing, but how many, you know, why do we need a turf field? Will that save X number of employee hours? Will it reduce our, um, you know, greenhouse gas emissions from mowing? Is it the preferred field for bringing in privately run league tournaments? I just think if we're gonna recommend something, that we should give some objective reasons behind the recommendations. He probably has them, but you know, when you work in a, in an industry, you know all these things already, but we don't and the public doesn't. Right. Here's another place where we kind of contradict ourselves, where earlier we want more rec fields, but in the questionnaire, people are satisfied with the amount of rec fields. But we might not have enough, we might need more, but we just kind of, I think we need to make that case.
Somewhere, uh, is there any place where we should not, uh, interfere with, uh, good or use good farmland for recreational purposes?
Yeah, that should be in here, you're right. Um, if I make another bullet, Rich, and highlight it, can you go back to it if I put it down here at the end?
The preservation of farmland should always be a consideration.
And I think too, there's like a careful wording that we need to make sure we choose. Technically, rec fields are open space. However, if we're installing turf fields, we're not really adding to open space, we're taking away from it, so, um. Perhaps those could be in, you know, only really, I would hate for them to you know, take a big open meadow and put down a turf field on it.
Right, so I think maybe should take away.
The one good thing about turf fields is you could have one turf field in continuous cycle and not require two fields.
Right, yeah.
That's, you can make the argument from that point of view too.
I think the main idea behind synthetic fields is the drainage issue, I guess, maybe able to, uh, take a shorter time for the field to recover, I think that was the main.
Oh, so the the turf fields are not draining fast enough to be.
Yeah, I think it was an issue of, well, not the synthetic, I guess, yeah, the turf fields, there was an issue with that.
That, that sounds like it was not engineered right though.
I'm a little concerned about, I know what re, what recommendation you're referring to by that one member of the public at the, um. But I'm concerned about one person having a recommendation included that was not really backed up and supported by stakeholder groups.
I can take that out.
What do you feel, Kirk and Norm?
I think it's too much money.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, I don't know how realistic it is, I just kind of threw that in there, see what the other people, other, other people in the group thought about it. I think it was the issue again, was the issue, the public pool was the, uh, the issue with the.
It was only one.
Whole facility at the high school and everything and having to share it with the high school students. But I mean, obviously the main issue would be the budget.
All right, am I clear to delete it?
Yeah, there's also a part there about exercise stations, I don't know, did you want to leave that part in or does?
And what's Deep River?
Good question. It's one of the things that somebody sent me. I can, I can take that off, I guess.
I think that we could, I think that this, um, uh, like the community center, I think some of these can be incorporated into one bullet. For instance, you know, Parks and Recreation should investigate, you know, available improvements or enhancements within our existing spaces. I E, playground area, uh, exercise paths, um, additional hiking trails. You know, there's a few bullets that reference really specific projects that we could probably make under a blanket statement like continuous improvement on the properties that we already maintain in addition to, you know, anything new that we want to create. Just that? Summer, okay. I thought this was a good one on organic landscaping. Oh, um, I had one, uh, that Norm and I were talking about and also, uh, I think I talked about it with Terry Donovan. And I don't know if we've discussed it at a past meeting, I'm not sure if it should go in economic development or Parks and Rec, but, um, at most of these locations, uh, there are not any, uh, licensed food and beverage operations. And I thought it might be a nice way for the town to make some money by selling permits for food trucks or something. And I don't know if we should put that here or economic development, or if it's even a good recommendation.
I think that, uh, I think it's a good idea, but um, it's not like we would be, if it's a food truck, it's not like we'd be devoting uh, land other than a couple of parking spots.
Yeah, it would be a zoning function probably to manage these permits, right? Or, you know, sell the, collect fees for the ability to be there. Uh, cause, right, Norm? Cause it'd kind of be like out, you know? So in that way, I thought it was land use and that it has to be on this town land, but.
Yeah, it it shouldn't be at, um, sports events, I don't think, where you have the booster clubs, you know, raise money. Other than that, I think it's a good idea.
It's mostly Bridebrook and McCooks. Because I don't think Bridebrook has like a little food stand at all. I know that some of the other fields do.
No, I, I would say that's a good idea. Not a lot of people at Bridebrook watching. Food truck could come in for fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah, I don't know, soccer season, that place, you can't get a parking spot.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
And they're there like all day.
Okay.
Sadly, I have been one of those people.
Yeah, I should do it, unless the town, unless the booster clubs want to raise money. Maybe the food truck permit fee. It would be good to support the field.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, you could, in the, sometimes they have a hard time finding volunteers, like that little food stand at Vets Field.
Yeah.
If the Little League decides that they don't have enough volunteers to open it, they could forfeit it to a food truck permit, that the money goes to them, or whatever.
Yeah, no, that's, I think it's a good idea.
Would that be in parks or economic development, do you think?
A lot of our recommendations appear in multiple places, so I'm comfortable with either.
You think that should be merged with any of the other bullet points, or I think that should be a separate bullet point for the food truck permits?
I guess it could be merged with additional improvements, but I would want to just explicitly make the case that this is a revenue generator for the town. Any other thoughts here on Parks and Rec? This was a good one, I thought, there's a lot here. So I think, Rich, that gets through your sections, so if you are able to just kind of make the small notes that we talked about, we can get these formatted and into the master document. So right now, the master document has agriculture, residential development, and these three. So we're getting there.
Yeah, I think the only other section, I really don't have that much on, you know, so there was a town hall, so I sent, I sent what I had to Gary. Really wasn't too much to add from the last time, but I don't know if, you know, we have to keep, put that section in, or whatever, you know, whatever, what we want to do.
All right, well.
I think that was all, I think that was all the, all the subsections I had for this portion.
If there's like a paragraph on town hall or something, we can make it a subsection, might just be worth saying to continually in the required space.
I'll see what Gary wants to add.
Or you could also save it in our drive.
Right. I can probably post something my next, next meeting, or meeting after.
The meeting after will be done.
Oh, okay.
On our new plan. So I'll start formatting those once you let me know that you're all set. Water and wastewater is not going well. I continue to have a very difficult time getting a hold of Brad Cargill, I know he's really busy, but this is one that is required. We have to put the sewer map in here, and any, and like.
So, Michelle, we've reached out to those guys like several, several times, they know that this is a priority. And we've talked to Gary, we've talked, I mean, I don't know what we have to do, if we have to get Mr. Nickerson involved, but the fact that they're not really helping is kind of, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it's a problem, and it's not, it's not been sprung on them, this is a conversation we started in the fall.
Exactly, so I think, I think that we need to talk to Gary and find out what his, because I know Gary was trying to reach out to some other staff in, at town hall, and I have not, I have not followed up with Gary since then to find out how successful he has been getting participation from them. But that's something that we need to get ironed out. And if, if you want, I can, I can talk to Mark Salerno and have him talk to Mark Nickerson or something, because I sympathize with your, with your difficulty there.
Yeah, um, I know a number of meeting requests went out this week from Gary, so let's give it another day or two, but Gary also, I'm not, our timeline issue, I'm not sure how far out into the building that has been communicated as yet, so.
Okay, I got you.
So let's give it a couple days.
Yeah.
But only a couple days.
If you want, because, because Brad works for Joe, right? If you want, if, if you want, I can call there and try to talk to Joe. Or have you had any luck actually getting them on the phone?
I had a meeting with Brad and Ben North, where we went through, I spent over an hour with them, we went through the requirements, you know, even just, you know, because I understand that writing a document can be a hurdle, and that's not a hurdle that's necessary for them to cross. So even if it was just a bulleted list of, you know, facts and recommendations, we spoke about providing that, and that I could format it into the chapter, and that was in.
Well, even if they, even if they read in one line, or read and edit, you know, the one that we have, just something.
I know. But there's a lot of new requirements specifically for water and wastewater that are not in there from the last document, because they're new, and, you know, resiliency is one that's definitely impactful for water and sewer, also, we need a lot of maps, so.
And these are all technical, these are all technical bits that really are town staff part of their job, right, isn't it? I mean, wouldn't you say, understanding what the requirements by the state is like a staff level function?
Yes, I would. The other thing that I'm concerned is going to happen is, we're going to just wing it, right? We're going to send out this document for approval, because we're going to run out of time. And then staff's going to see it and say, wait, why didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't want that to happen. They, they need, they need to provide input. That's, that's, that's how I see it, anyway. They need to definitely, in fact, it should be like, the majority of that work should be on them. Given that it is a technical, a technical thing, that it's not my background, for sure. And I don't know who else, who else on the committee has that type of knowledge to be able to write a document that's geared towards that. Other than them, I.
I'm comfortable with writing it because of my day job, if they provide you with the information. But I need that.
All right, Michelle, could you, could you, I think you should call Mark Nickerson, tell him we need this thing in, in a week.
Well, yeah, and I will, but I've been allowing, I, I, not allowing, that's the wrong word. I've been waiting for Gary to communicate with him about this non-extension.
Is he in a, is he in a meeting tonight? Do you know where he is?
No, I don't know where he is.
Yes, he is, it's the, he called a special meeting at 6:30 at the town hall.
Okay. Is that for the wetlands, or?
Trying to promote the police station, just trying to educate people in the importance of this, to pass. It was all about the police station.
Okay. All right.
We'll not have discretionary funding for the police station if we do not finish this document.
I have to follow up with Gary anyway, so I can make a point to call him and find out exactly what's going on with this.
Yeah, well, you need some stuff too, right? I mean.
I do, absolutely, yes, I do.
Don't feel that you need to fight this battle, I'm, I'm making minimal headway, but I think if we're both pressing, it can't hurt.
Well, the, the thing, the thing about it is, is Gary's in the building with, with all the, all the staff. He's in the building with, with all of them, so he should be able to, you know, walk over and ask them what's going on. Over, over and over again, until, until they give him what he wants.
I know. Um, looking back at our notes, we, as I see wastewater management, we originally had talked about solid waste management in our table of contents, and then somehow missed it in the sections. I think I'm going to go back to the 2009 document and see if anything's in there. Try to adapt it if possible, but that, you got me thinking also about other people, town staff, that we need to follow up with. I mean, I think there's, I know we're having a recycling problem in terms of contamination, that's becoming an issue. I don't know if there's anything else that they feel needs to be addressed in this document. But it's just kind of a side note. I don't know how we missed it, but we did. All right, Kirk, take us home with good news on transportation.
Sorry, I don't have a lot of good news. I do have, I do have a lot of notes and a lot of material. I have been neglectful, I will admit, that I haven't worked on it for a month. So I have to dig that up and get going on that.
Do you think that's something that could be even in just like initial form by July 15th?
What is it? That's two weeks? Yeah, I think I can do that.
Okay. And that'll be like the bike path, a lot of that was existing, okay.
Yeah, I have, I had, I had like a whole list of things, like areas where the roads got overwashed during storms and stuff like that, I have, I have a lot of, a lot of stuff like that, that I need to consolidate and you know, make it, make it you know, part of our template and format.
Right, and you have the sidewalk map and stuff too, right?
I do have a sidewalk map, I was, I have been promised a list of sidewalk improvements on where they are actually going. I have, I have, that's another thing that I spoke with Joe about, that I have not seen. So I don't have a list of what's actually getting ready to be built, and what's on his list to match it against what, I have what our list of sidewalks are.
Yeah, from our subcommittee, from, from what, yeah.
From Dawn, Dawn and Gary had put together a list. I have that, but I don't have the town staff equivalent.
Okay.
But yeah, and, and bike paths, and crosswalks, and all that other stuff, yeah, that, that's all going to go in there, too.
Okay. All right. Well, here we are at the end of the agenda. Anything else for discussion?
Do you feel like, do you feel like that, I, I did not read all of the correspondence exactly regarding this snafu that happened with our extension. What, how, how exactly did we get turned around? Is it, was this just like, somebody decided not to do this, or what? What happened? It was never, it was never a possibility that we would have gotten an extension?
That's correct. We were not granted an extension in the initial governor's order. It was amiss on the town staff side.
So, so do you feel like that's something that we could ask for, that would?
Right, so I went down that avenue, and no. There is no mechanism for an extension of the deadline of the plan. The mechanism that exists would be if your plan is not updated on time, you request a waiver so that you can receive discretionary state funding. So there's no safety net saying, okay, now we have until January 15th. It's either we make it on time, or we don't, and then once we don't make it, anytime we're trying to get state funding, we request a waiver of the POCD to achieve that state funding, until our POCD has been updated and refilled.
Considering no sparse, considering the, the state of the state of Connecticut, we better get this thing in.
Yeah.
Because they don't have a lot of surplus cash.
Yeah, I can think of no reason that they should grant us a waiver if we don't get it in, honestly.
Right, well, I mean, I, I think that we, we have a worst-case scenario, we could submit what, you know, something that's not exactly 100% the way we want it.
Yes.
So I feel like missing the, missing the deadline is not a, it's not a good idea.
No, that's not an option, so we really need to have a finished document. We need to have everything that's new that we're going to write, according to backtracking here. Because so much of the end of the timeline is out of our control due to state statutes around public hearing, and, you know, public notice, and everything like that. We have got to get that document published for the beginning of August, so that it can go through the net. So whatever the document looks like, whether it's half old, half new, we got to get it there. I'd like to see it be as much new as possible, because we've got all of this research, you know, at the front of our minds now, even though we, the front of our minds is three months ago, a bit. I'd hate to lose the momentum, because I do think that this is going to be something where, once it's turned in, it, even though we intend to go back to it, it will be more difficult, because we'll have, first off, there'll have to be work starting on the Affordable Housing Plan, because that deadline will start kicking in, and second, we'll have kind of the relief of having that deadline off of us. Off of us. And I don't doubt that we can finish it, but I just think that even though it's. Hard now, we should try to get as much of it done as we can. While meeting the deadline.
Agreed.
I'm not a sports coach, otherwise I would give us some really pep talk right now. So pretend I did.
I don't know, that was pretty peppy there, Michelle.
All right. Go get them team.
With the gipper.
All right, so I think we have our work cut out for us. Norma, I'd love to schedule some time with you again this week to. Talk about commercial development because I really valued your feedback so much on residential development. So if you don't mind, I'll reach out to you about that. Great.
Yep. We have, I'm sorry, we have a planning meeting next Tuesday, or is it?
We do.
Yeah.
I think the agenda went out today.
Yeah, I, I. I'm getting ready to review and send it back to him tomorrow. I don't know what's on the agenda yet, but yeah, we do have one.
Through Zoom? Through Zoom?
Yeah. All right, so I'm sure that we'll all talk between now and July fifteenth, but we'll see each other here again on July fifteenth. Does anyone, anybody want to move to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.